All right, technical difficulties have been resolved, so we are live streaming this for people who couldn't make it today, but thank you all for taking the time to come out here today and to the library to meet our candidates for the Abilene City Commission, and they will all be giving about three minutes remarks, and then afterwards, you can mingle with them and ask them any questions that you're burning to ask today. So I think we'll just go ahead and get started, since we have so many of them, and thank you all for coming today, and we'll just go ahead and start here at the beginning of the alphabet, since I am a librarian, we will have to go in alphabetical order. And you can come to the podium, or if you feel like doing it from your chair, those microphones also work, but if you want to come up here, that might be the best, so. Thank you all.
Thank you. My name is Alan Byer. I'm a lifelong resident of Abilene. My family has lived here throughout the entirety of me raising all of my children. My parents ran the Nafa store here in Abilene. I worked there for 23 years. I learned how to work with the community. I've worked with a lot of the people that help make this community run as a whole, in between all the different department heads, and, you know, I really feel like I have a strong sense of what this town is, what it represents, what direction we need to start heading. At the end of the day, we get the bad news over and over, in between the taxes increased for the mill levies, sales tax increased, of course, that happened a while back, but we're just now feeling that. You know, at the end of the day, we're here to live a great life, and that's what we are going to try to do after we pull ourselves up through our challenges. And, you know, I plan on staying here for my whole life, because this community means so much to me. In between all that, you know, we got a lot of different projects in between the ball fields, we have the industrial complex, we have a lot of really great things that makes this community a whole. And if we can begin to start capitalizing on some of those really great things that draw people to this community, such as our rodeo, and our ball diamonds that we're in the process of working on, that's just icing on the cake for us. We need to just start pulling in tax dollars as much as we can. That way, we're not so reliant on so many grants. We can be self-sufficient in as best a capacity as we possibly can be. Thank you all for being here today. Thank you to all the candidates that are stepping up to be part of this as well. Get out there and vote, August 6th, November 4th. Thank you so much for being here.
Okay, good evening. My name is Debbie Lidle. I also grew up here in Abilene. I've spent most of my life here. My husband and I raised our three children here, and three of my great grandchildren are also being raised here. Abilene is home. It's where my roots are, and it's where my heart is. I care deeply about this community, and I want to give back by helping to secure a stronger future for our city, one where more people can feel proud to call Abilene home. I have spent most of my life working in the public sector, and I know the importance of listening to people, people's concerns, working hard, and doing my homework. I volunteered for 14 years with the American Cancer Society's Relay for Life. I'm currently volunteering with the UBA V Foundation, which is a foundation that supports my granddaughter in what she is going through. And now I want to give back to the community. While I don't have prior experience on the city commission, I promise to study issues closely and to make well-informed, educated decisions. I do believe it is essential to continue to support ongoing projects, like the infrastructure improvements in housing, while also bringing new ideas to support our continued growth. I am especially excited about the industrial park and the multipurpose sports fields. The industrial park will help us grow our tax base and create jobs. That is vital to this community. And the new sports fields are long overdue. Our existing ones are falling apart and outdated. We need a space that reflects our community's pride, something both our kids, our families, and our visitors can enjoy. I do understand that nobody likes raising taxes, but I also recognize that inflation affects cities just like it affects families. I do appreciate that our city commission has stayed revenue-neutral while securing state and federal grant dollars to help fund important projects, and I also know that prices are going up for everyone. The cost for the city to provide emergency services, public safety, quality of life activities, and maintain our infrastructure are also going up. The city cannot continue to provide these services at the current level without bringing in more revenue. It is important to remember the city is just one part of your tax bill. Many other taxing entities also play a role. One last thing, I would like to look into ways that the city of Abilene can attract businesses that provide safe and fun activities for our youth. When I was growing up, we had an arcade, movie theater, bowling alley, skating rink. Heck, we had two Dairy Queens. Today, we have far fewer places to gather safely. I want to work towards bringing those kinds of activities back, not just for our children, but to make Abilene a more attractive place for families to put down their roots. I do thank you for your time and for the opportunity to serve the community that I love. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Alyssa Boss, and I want to tell you a little bit about myself and why I would make a great commissioner. I'm not native to Abilene. I'm not even native to the state of Kansas. I was born and raised in the Denver area. About 20 years ago, I moved to Abilene. And after about two years here, I said, I want to go back to Denver. It took less than two years of being back in the metro area to realize I had made a critical mistake. I corrected course, and I came back home to Abilene. For the last 16 years, I have worked as a public servant employed by Dickinson County. The first nine of those years, I was a member of the team known as the first first responders, commonly known as 911 dispatchers. During that time, I worked with friends and neighbors to provide assistance to the wonderful citizens of this community. I then took the knowledge, relationships, and grit that I learned in that job, and became the heartbeat of the digital pulse for the emergency services through digital technology. For the last seven years, I've worked at the IT department. I began as a technician specializing in supporting emergency responders, and it gave me unique insight into the relationships and functionality between not only the city, but other agencies nearby. Being in this role has taught me a lot about the hows and whys of these relationships, but it's also granted insight into their needs and wants, and how to bring those ideas to fruition on a shoestring budget. Abilene is not unique in its budget struggle. As part of my daily duties, I work and interact with others who also work for small government, and these relationships allow us to put our heads together, compare notes, and compare notes on how each agency handles the challenges of getting more done with less. I've utilized this knowledge on several occasions in my daily work, and I would love to be able to bring these insights to the city. While budget struggles may not be unique to Abilene, our reasoning and our approach must be. As with a lot of rural communities, our population is in decline, and this is because our youth are leaving. They are leaving not to chase a grand adventure, but because they're leaving to seek a comfortable life. Abilene offers a broad variety of jobs: minimum wage, manufacturing, skilled labor. But while the jobs are here, affordable housing isn't. If these people that are working lower-income jobs can't afford to live here, there's not an incentive to stay in Abilene. They will either commute, or they will find their employment elsewhere. And if people are commuting for these jobs, we look less attractive to incoming industry. If people don't live here, they have to pull their workforces from other communities, and why would you invest in a community that hasn't invested in itself? Affordable housing isn't a problem that can be fixed overnight. So while this is in process, we need to begin investing in the community in other ways. We need to invest in making Abilene appealing to young families. We need activities, and we need entertainment. While we have some great things to bring visitors, we need the same level of great things for our residents. People will commute for attractions, but they're not going to commute for daily entertainment. If we can entice some entertainment, we can become attractive for families. If we can become attractive for families, we will be attractive for industry. And if we can be attractive for industry, we will grow as a community. And if we can grow, we can thrive. So I ask you, can we entice entertainment? Can we become more attractive to young people? Can we draw in industry? And can we return Abilene to glory? Together, we absolutely can.
Hi, I'm Connie Covington. I was raised in Salina, Kansas, met my husband in Olathe, and we had a great time, lived great life, and we came back here six years ago, and we fell in love with Abilene. Also, after we lived here a while, we started seeing some complications. One was property taxes on the rise. I'm paying more in property taxes today than I did in California. I think that is wrong. I just can't see it, don't see how it happened, but it did. And raising revenue does not have to be property tax. That's the easy way to go. You want to get some revenue in this town? Get some businesses. You want to get some businesses? You got to do something different. We can't keep going in the same way. If we keep going in the same way, we're going to get what we still got, and we'll get more of it. I'm not for that. I want to see the industrial park, bring some manufacturing companies in. There's no reason why we don't. There's no reason why we don't get a tech school in here that would teach people how to work on farm machinery. We're an ag state. We're surrounded by ag states, and if we could build that machinery up, we could see some dividends. We could see some small businesses growing, and we could see some more people coming in. If we don't have jobs for our young people, they're not going to be here. They're going to go off to a four-year college. They're going to see life in a different way, and they're going to look at Abilene, and they're not going to see what they need to see. They're not going to see job opportunities. They're not going to see income that's going to support a family and a home, and they're going to go elsewhere. Over the last few years, maybe 10, we've lost 400 people in Abilene. 400 people in a city of 100,000 is nothing, but 400 people in a city of 6,000 plus is a great deal. And we're continuing to lose people. The average stats of a four-year college, less than half complete it. Out of that half that do complete it, less than 25% pursue what they went to college for. Everybody does not need to go to a four-year college. What we do need to do is give them an opportunity to go to a school where they can go and get a job that they want, not something that they have paid and are going to continue to pay. And I'm for educating the kids in what they want to do. We are, again, an ag state. A lot of our farmers are having children, and we need to give them something that they're interested in. It doesn't have to be farming, but it has to be something that they want to do. Why give them a big college tuition and a big college bill and no job afterwards? A tech school doesn't do that. If you vote for me, that's what I'm going to be working for. I am not for higher taxes. I'm for using what we have. Thank you. I'm Connie Covington. Vote for me, and I'll do what I can.
Good afternoon. I am John Kohlhoff. I'm a husband. I'm a father to three kids. I'm a pharmacist. My wife and I own a pharmacy, Injection City. I'm a real estate broker, a real estate developer, and investor, and I'm also a farmer and cattle rancher. I have lived in Abilene for 18 years, and made the simple choice, the easy choice, to raise my family in Abilene. I first worked at Patterson Pharmacy, which is, I think, likely where I maybe met many of you for the very first time. There's definitely some faces that I saw across the counter 18 years ago. And so I had the honor of caring for you and your families, and I appreciate that. Most of you guys probably don't know much about me, but something that you might be surprised to know is that I'm willing to do the right thing and say no, even when it's not popular. I think one of the things that Abilene needs to do to grow is take advantage of the tremendous asset in our location. We're right on I-70. We're right next to two railroads. I think that is really the path forward for our growth, is taking advantage of all of the interstate traffic that we have. One of my commitments, since I've been on the commission, is to having qualified leadership for our city. I've been very encouraged that our interim city manager has brought to light many of the issues that I've been sounding the alarm on for two and a half years as one of your city commissioners. I'm really here to serve you. I think that Abilene is probably the best place on the planet to live and to raise a family, and I'm here to help push forward our mutual goals to make Abilene meet its potential. I will humbly request that you vote for me in the primary election next month, and I appreciate all you being here. Thank you. God bless.
We're all farm people, anyway. We can survive in the heat a little bit. I wanted to thank all of you for coming today. This is a great crowd. I mean, my goodness, to come and see city commission candidates and all, oh, a whole row of us that even want to have a job that doesn't pay anything anyway is amazing. So what we need are, we need informed candidates, and I can tell these guys are all informed. They've been working at learning, and we need informed citizens, too, and that's what we want to thank you guys for. This is a big deal. This is not something that we just lightly consider and then go home with and say, yeah, whatever, they sent me the tax bill, and it just is what it is. It's more than that. We can be involved. We all have to be enemies. My wife, Val, and I moved here from Salina six years ago. I'm a farm kid from Lindesburg area, so I know the area. I know that Lindesburg knows how to do their history, don't they? We all really recognize that. And Abilene has a history of a cow town, and there's a lot of good things and a lot of good people that are working to continue to develop that process. We met Doug and Cindy Shern, well, I should say Dr. Doug. We're just Doug and Bruce. When I went to dental school in Kansas City, and he was going to medical school, we're the same age, and we met in a Bible study, and we've continued to be friends since then. Once we decided to move and retire, we decided, well, I think we'd like to live where they are. We'd like to live in Abilene, and sure enough, we really enjoy the town. It's a wonderful, small town. I don't miss anything in Salina at all, except for the restaurants. We've met many new friends, too, Scott and Lynette Hill, and we appreciate all the things that they've done for us and with us. They're a great team, and we're fortunate to have Scott in the Senate now. Thank you, Scott. Personally, I bring close to 50 years of management experience to the position having had a successful dental practice, as well as serving on management boards as a partner in two other businesses. I understand how to listen, and learn, and encourage, and challenge. They all need to fit together. I spent about three hours with our previous city manager, just learning how do all of these pieces fit together. It's elaborate. I didn't think it was anywhere near as big a deal it is between taxes, grants, different franchise things, and all of that stuff fits together. But I appreciated his input to help me learn. I've spent time with our interim city manager, John Quinde. He's a great. A new sense of accountability that I'm sure will benefit all of us. I've met and talked with Jim Fram as well. He is a very, very knowledgeable person, and knows how to, I think, move us off the dime in the industrial park area. He's come up with something, and I'm going to keep speaking because I think it's important. I believe that that what we have heard somewhat through channels about Abilene is that they get different messages. Developers get different messages, and you cannot have that. You have to be consistent. Every time you talk to a person, whether it's city, county, development, corporation, it doesn't make any difference. They need to have the same information from every person, and that gets you consistent. That starts people who are essentially headhunters, who are looking to bring their business. They need to have a reason to come and work with a city. They don't need any more reasons to not work with a city, because that's how you bring it. So my experience in franchise hotels gives me that kind of experience from the other side. I've seen what it takes. I know what people need. I know what cities need to be able to be consistent and know who they're dealing with. We would like to develop the infrastructure for the industrial park, but I'm going to tell you, unless you have a specific company that needs a specific thing, just to put in infrastructure, doesn't guarantee anything. It may not be the right thing that they need, but you develop, and you get with the people, you work together to develop exactly what you need in terms of streets, infrastructure, locations, size of lots, all those kinds of things. I'm going to stop now, but I appreciate everybody that's here, and you're doing what you're doing, to even take time out of your busy lives to come and listen to us. Thank you so much.
To lower the mic here. First of all, I'd like to say thanks to all of you for coming out this evening, everyone who's watching at home. I'd like to thank the library for hosting a forum where all the candidates are invited. I think that's important, and I appreciate this opportunity, Wendy. I'd also like to thank all of the candidates up here, as I think Alan did earlier, too. It's a great sign, I think, when you've got this many people who are interested in investing their time in the future of their community. So I think that's a good thing for Abilene, regardless of who is elected, comes through the primary and is elected in November. For those of you who don't know me, I can add to my credentials. I'm also born and raised in Abilene, Kansas, fifth generation Dickinson County. My family first arrived here from Canada in 1878. I did and came home four years ago when my mom passed away. I came home because I felt a sense of place here, because Abilene has always been my home, and because, as the fifth generation, I kind of felt that it was important to have me being here and keeping that place in the community. I didn't waste any time in getting involved in the community. I'm active in my church. I'm active in community meals. I'm the treasurer of the library board. I think community service is important, and I think serving on the city commission is another form of community service. So you've heard great qualifications from people up here tonight. I'd like to give you two qualifications that I have that I think are somewhat unique, and would bring a different perspective to the commission. First is that I do have experience as an elected official. I was a member and president of my local school board in Warren, New Jersey, which was a K-8 district. We administered, developed and administered a budget of $13 million, which is larger than the Abilene city budget. So I do know how difficult it is to craft a budget that makes people happy, and that saves your resources and uses your resources wisely. Just because it's a bigger budget, doesn't make it any easier. It's always a challenge to craft a budget. And as we've heard from everybody, there's an acknowledgement that times are tough. If you came to the last city commission meeting, you heard the interim city manager say that things are tougher than we thought. We are definitely going to have to do more with less, and I hope everyone here is prepared for that challenge. The second thing that I bring to the commission is that I have had a career in public policy analysis. And for those of you who wonder what that means, which is pretty much everybody that I tell that to, in public policy analysis, I was able to work closely with everyone from global corporations to elected and appointed officials at city, state, and national levels. A lot of work in economic development to make certain that communities were thriving, that we were able to work together and craft policy that fostered economic development. You've heard a lot about taxes tonight. You've heard a lot about the importance of the industrial park. You've heard a lot of different ideas. Those are great ideas, but they have to come together with strategic management and strategic planning. Our next city manager is crucial to being able to articulate our vision, to bring information in that we don't have, and to help us craft that vision. I want to be part of that. I want to help Abilene be what it was when I grew up, which is just a great place to be from, a great place to call home, and I'd appreciate your support in the primary and in November. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming today. I guess I drew the short straw and will be the last face you remember for today. I want to thank all the candidates, too. It is a great thing to see Abilene have all the people step up and jump into this role. This role is not easy. There's a lot to this role, and I just am excited to see that these folks are very qualified, and that we've got this much excitement to make Abilene better. A little bit about myself, if I haven't told you, my name is Cy Taylor, if I forgot. I have grown up here my whole life. I've been in Abilene since 1980. My parents moved to town because we bought the bowling alley, the town social center for a wife, who was also an Abilene resident, who graduated high school like I did, and went through Abilene public schools like I did. I've got two boys in the school system, or three boys in the school system now. I've got two Longhorns and one Cowboy. I promise I didn't forget one. They're all special. But like so many of these folks, I see the budget concerns. I see the revenue dipping. I see the revenue dipping, and I see the expenditures going up. Like I said, it is expensive and more expensive to run the city. It's outpacing normal inflation. So there are tough times ahead. Those decisions are going to have to be made to help even that out. That's going to take reorganization with the city. That's going to take possibly That's going to take reorganization with the city. That's going to take possibly not backfilling positions. It's going to be hard decisions. But the thing that we want to do the most of is keep the services we've got active and keep everybody that we've got on the payroll that wants to be on the payroll a job. So the best thing that we can do right now is crunch numbers, find efficiencies and work towards that. As far as growth goes, I'm all about growth. I will do everything I can to incentivize companies to come to town. I will jump through hoops and everything I can do to um, to push the message that Bruce said to developers, um, to whoever's interested in coming to town that we are open for business and that we need the business because that is what will drive the revenue growth that we need to help out with the budget. Um, another thing is I do think that we are on a positive path with, path with the community. I think our community is doing some good things with downtown. I see a lot of good businesses. I do see a lot of put positive momentum out there in town right now. I would just like to build on that. I think from what I've seen so far up here, there's a lot of good folks to vote for that will put us in good position to do just that. Again, thank you guys very much for coming. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Okay. I think we made it through everyone in pretty good time here. So we'll have some time now for um, the candidates to kind of spread out. You can go in the back there as well to get some space and just ask them their questions, chat, find out a little bit more about them. And I want to thank everyone again for coming out here today to the library. Um, our, if you don't know, our library was uh, started with a donation from Andrew Carnegie and Carnegie really believed that libraries were the cornerstone of democracy in our country. And um, the library board has made it one of our strategic priorities um, to increase civic engagement in our community. So thank you all for being a part of that and coming out here tonight. So I'll let them um, mingle with you uh, for a little while. Thank you.